Welcome, everybody. It is December 18th, 2024 at 5:36 PM. This is the Communication and Policy Committee of the Concord School Board. I am the Chair, Cara Meeker. With me are Members Liz Boucher and Jim Richards. Also with us tonight is Kathleen Murphy and Karen Fisher Anderson. This is the final committee of the 2024 year. And we are tonight continuing work that we have already started at previous meetings. And so tonight is just a continuation of that draft work. Tonight, we're going to be continuing putting eyes on Policy 415 regarding sex discrimination and sex-based harassment. We will also continue Policies 161 and 161.1 regarding discrimination and harassment generally, and review the appendices associated with those policies, Appendix A and Appendix B. What you have in front of you, oh, and also, I wanted to bring up that tonight, if I would really like to introduce the weapons policy that has been sort of on the books for quite some time, and we have yet to introduce it. So if we do have time to actually make copies of what Liz would like to propose, then hopefully we have time to review that as well. Liz, did you want to speak to that at all?
No, we can when we make it.
Okay, great.
And then I will.
Excuse me, I apologize. Okay, first things first, in, next to your stack, you're going to see Board Policy 415. And everyone should also have a bulleted list that goes with that. We had two separate meetings on Policy 415. Because the policy is so long, one meeting, we got sort of through the first half of that policy. A lot of that conversation had to do with formatting and the definition section. We then met again and went through the sort of second half of the policy, which had a lot to do with the grievance procedure, the appeals process, records retention, all that good stuff, all new language that had been introduced. What we have as of tonight is as much of the changes as I could get through. I've had a very busy month, and so it's not fully complete. I wasn't able to finish the second half of the second meeting's worth of comments, but I did want to go ahead and start from the beginning and just check in about the changes that did get made based on our conversations, so that we can check off, check them off as a committee to say, yes, this is what we wanted, this is how we're going to move forward. And then also, on the bulleted list, the second half of your bullets are the sort of need, the to-do list, the things that we need to do. And I wanted to make sure that everybody confirms that we are going to need to make those changes before I go in. The formatting especially is very, very difficult in this policy because the former policy didn't have a lot of numbering, and so we're now incorporating numbers and letters. You'll see throughout the policy that every time we mention a section within the policy, I've highlighted it because I don't want to update those numbers until we're totally done with the draft. So I'm just making note that we need to make sure those internal citations are accurate. Does anybody have any questions before we begin? Karen or Kathleen?
Not for me.
So, so just for my, just as I think about January and our board meeting, we won't be ready with this policy for our January meeting.
I don't think so. Unless these changes, unless everybody feels like these changes are straightforward enough that we could move it to the January meeting for first reading.
Yeah, it just takes so long.
Yeah.
For everything to get through. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see. Let's see how we do.
All right. So, starting on page one, you'll now see that the title includes an effective date, excuse me, which is tentative. It's effective on and after whatever date in January, hopefully, or further into 2025, because we had made note that we're going to have two concurrently running policies. So this new one is going to be effective. It also has it in the footnote so that you'll see the effective date on every page of the policy, so that anybody reading it is not confused about its relevance. What you will see moving forward is that there, there's no longer language that is read and also highlighted. So anything that Karen recommended that we remove, so she had highlighted that new language and suggested that we remove it. Anything that we had talked about being redundant, I went ahead and took out. Anything we had asked for her to leave in, I left in. So now we're just seeing all of the language of the current policy in black, all of the new language as introduced by Karen and in our conversations in red. Sound good?
There's some yellow in this.
There is yellow. So I did mention anytime that there's, are you seeing like the words?
Like Section 3 in the first page.
Right. So, like I mentioned, because we've introduced new numbering to this draft, I highlighted every mention of a citation within the policy. So that first instance where you see Section Rome 3, we're not 100% sure that that is going to stay Section 3 until we're fully done with. So all, all of the citations are highlighted, just the internal citations. So like, Section 504, you know, we, I didn't highlight that because that's always going to be Section 504, or Title IX. But if it's a, if it's a citation within the document, it's highlighted until we give the final.
Okay, so that could change, that's why.
Exactly.
That's just a placeholder or a reminder for us to make sure that we're all
Yes.
consistent when we finally.
Once we've added all of our new definitions, once we've changed all of the language we want to change, then we can update the, those citations.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, of course. The first section is, it doesn't say intent and purpose, but it's not numbered because that's our practice to just have our introductory statement prior to the first Rome 1, which is now Title IX nondiscrimination policy.
Karen, can I ask a question in the very first line? Just little things like the vision, I see what you're saying, the vision of Congress School, Concord School, we crossed out Concord School, and then we went with just, is it going to be, should it be the vision of the district?
Yes, it is. Sorry about that. That's the technical, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, that's my bad. That's just.
And then I have a silly question where we, where I cited Title IX. Do you want it formatted such that it lines up right, right under each other? Or did you purposely make it, I know it's silly, but the format in the original one is 1, 2, 3. This one is not completely lined up, but I didn't know if that was a format or stylistic.
That's just a formatting change. So like in Word, I went ahead, are you talking about the quote from Title IX?
Do you want it to be like that?
Yeah, so I just did for, because there are so many notes in this policy, I went ahead and just did a double indent anytime we had a quote.
Thank you.
But that's, again, just a placeholder because the formatting is just messy.
It sticks out, and it's an important quote.
Yep.
And then, the very first sentence in red is actually a good thing to note in that sort of third paragraph. "This policy and grievance procedure applies to all reports or complaints of sex discrimination, including reports or complaints of sex-based harassment." So one of the things that we discussed the first time was sex-based harassment is a form of sex discrimination. We agreed to include sex-based harassment as part of the definition of sex discrimination. So because of that, most of the references to sex-based harassment have been removed in the document, because it was sort of always repeating sex discrimination or sex-based harassment. Because sex-based harassment will now fall under sex discrimination, we don't have to repeat it. That being said, there are some processes in this policy for when you're making a complaint of sex discrimination that is not sex-based harassment, and when you are making a complaint regarding sex-based harassment. So I did think it was appropriate to include that addition in some places in the policy to make note that sex-based harassment has its own complaint process. So you'll see it sometimes, but not all the time. And I'm happy to take suggestions on if it's, if you find it to be redundant as we move through. Excuse me, okay. I'm just going to check off my bullets. So the first bullet was removing redundant language, which I did. I added back all of the original language in Policy 415 to add strike-throughs. Are there any questions on Rome 1, Rome 2, A, B, C, before we get to the definition section?
Just a comment about the redundancy issue. I prefer it, I, because I know when people read policies and, you know, when we talk with folks about these things, it's important that you repeat it and repeat it again and say it in a different way and say, let's bring it home, you know, and it makes meaningful. So I, I'm not bothered by the fact that we're repeating it or we're using it in, in our, in our definitions.
Yeah, and I think.
I'd rather keep it in.
Yeah, I definitely think there is plenty of repetition in this policy.
There is.
I do think that Karen had made note of, especially in the intro, in this, these first few pages, it kept referring back to Title IX, as if we didn't already know that all of this was, was based on, on Title IX. So I, I think I was fine with cleaning that up.
Yeah, that's okay, but it, that other one is important.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so without other comments, we're going to go to Section, Rome 2D, which is the definition section. Does that sound good? Okay. So in the definition section, all of the definitions, current definitions are now numbered. They were not numbered before. We made some modifications to complainant and complaint, so that they are consistent with the CFR. We kept the definitions that, Jim, you had mentioned, you know how like, for instance, dating violence is now moved to underneath sex-based harassment? So we're keeping the definition there, but we're just making note that it's going to, you're going to find that definition elsewhere. When we get to a couple of definitions, Karen, you had provided us in print a document with definitions that you had, that were additionally suggested.
Correct.
One that needs to go in that I don't have language for is confidential employee.
Yep.
So I should have made a placeholder for that, but I'm realizing I didn't, so.
All right, I can pull that.
Okay, so that'll be the new number 3, will be confidential employee.
The new number 3 where?
In the definition section. So I should have done placeholder.
Oh, oh, between.
Current, current 3 is dating violence, but actually confidential.
Right, because we had, we had, in our discussions, there's confidential employee is mentioned throughout, and so I think we ended up asking, we should just add that definition, but I just didn't have that language. So we'll need to add that.
We have that though, Karen, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the same thing goes for what is now number 11, which is preponderance of evidence. We had talked about adding that definition, and I also didn't have language for that.
And that is going to be the new number, sorry.
It's actually 11.
Yeah, I did have a placeholder for that. I just forgot to put the placeholder in for confidential employee.
Got it, okay.
So we're at 11 with preponderance of evidence. Then we have quid pro quo. Then we have in stricken language recipient. So I wanted to bring this up because in our discussions, we had decided as a committee to remove recipient as a defined term because it's synonymous with school district. So we thought for, for just ease of understanding, just call it the district. But as I went through this policy, the term recipient is used several times, and also it is defined in the CFR. So I'm recommending that we actually put it back in, even though it is.
So, so after number 12, you want to keep that definition?
I do. So this, this reflects what we had decided, but I'd like to propose that we change that. Just because it is in the CFR, as I realized, and also it's used in more sections than I realized. Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah, I guess.
It's in the CFR, I guess. Yeah, it's just one of those things.
It's a weird word.
It is a weird word.
Got it.
Okay, and I will add that back in.
So we'll correct the format of that too, right?
Right, so that'll now.
We'll change up all the numbers now, but that's okay.
Exactly, which is why I didn't change any citations just yet. Respondent was good, retaliation was good. And then we get to 15 and 16. So we have sex discrimination, which is defined. You'll see in the definition, it now includes the, the sentence, sex-based harassment as defined is a form of sex discrimination. Do we think that is sufficient to combine those two definitions? Or do you think sex-based harassment needs to be under 15 as a sub-paragraph? It's a little hard to combine the two because if you look at sex-based harassment, there are actually several steps in that definition. So I'm hoping, if you guys want to take a minute to just read it, I'm hoping we can leave them separate. So we have sex discrimination, which includes sex-based harassment, and then sex-based harassment, which includes all of these things, stalking, quid pro quo, et cetera, et cetera.
Do you, if we do that though, Karen, do you think we should remove the second sentence under sex discrimination where it says sex-based harassment is defined as a form of, since it's now defined right underneath it?
Well, I think that was actually the, the sentence that I thought would connect the two properly.
Okay.
Which is to say, and maybe the sentence just needs to be restructured or rewritten, but what we're trying to say is that sex-based harassment is a form of sex discrimination, and therefore anytime we mention sex discrimination in the policy, we mean.
Both.
Both. We mean sex discrimination on, you know, discrimination on the basis of sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, pregnancy and other related conditions, et cetera, et cetera, and also sex-based harassment. And the only way we can do that is to put a sentence in there that says that the, that sex-based harassment is a form of sex discrimination.
We wouldn't put it in the definition of sex-based harassment? Like just take that sentence and put it in the, in number 16?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could start with that. It's, it's defined as a form of discrimination, and it means other, as, on a basis of blah, blah, blah. Plug it in right at the beginning if you wanted to.
Or rewrite it as like, a form of sex discrimination is sex-based harassment. I'm just, it, it, to Karen's point, to have sex-based harassment stated without having defined it.
So sex-based harassment, well, but we, it is defined in 16.
16, but later on.
Right. So maybe like as defined in this section?
Yeah, because we, our definitions are alphabetical, so.
Right.
Will come after it. But I'm fine either way. I like the fact that I'm, I favor it being clear to understand.
I know.
And, you know, whichever way is the clearest to understand. But I think having sex-based harassment as number 16 is important because it does do exactly that. It clarifies for people who say, well, what's, you know, sex-based harassment is a form of sex discrimination, well, what's sex-based harassment? And this tells you it. I don't think it hurts us to have it in there, as long as we understand, as long as it's clear that one item is a subset of the other.
But 15 does it for you. 15 does that, and then it rolls right into 16 as a definition.
I'm fine with both of them, but if Liz thinks it's clear to reword that sentence, I'm fine.
Or one form of sex discrimination is sex-based harassment. And then you go into sex-based harassment.
What I'm, what I'm hung up on is a form of. I'm not sure that's the right way.
Yeah, well.
Sex-based harassment is just sex discrimination.
Is, is if we could put that prior to sex-based harassment, so we would then roll into it.
So a form of sex discrimination is sex-based harassment. Is that what you're?
Yeah, then, then it would roll right into, what is sex-based harassment?
Can I, is it okay if I add as defined in this policy? All right, so.
Can you read that again?
Yeah, I'm going to repeat it. So the first sentence is good, so it's that sex discrimination prohibited through gender identity, period. Then, a form of sex discrimination is sex-based harassment as defined in this policy. And then continues for a definition of discrimination and additional types of discrimination prohibited by the district, see Policy 161.
Yeah, really, I'm not going to lose sleep over that. Just trying to see if it rolls into.
I'm comfortable with either phrasing. I understand either phrasing, but I'm, that's me. I want to make it so everybody can understand.
Right. I think as long as people know that sex-based harassment is a form of sex discrimination, so that whenever we refer to one, it means both. And I think either way does it, but I understand the point that we haven't yet stated it in the definition section, so. Preview. Sorry, man, the dry air is killing me.
You want some water? I can get some.
Yeah.
Is that full or empty?
I can, or maybe so. I think it is.
Ooh, it's full. Yeah. Oh, thank you, Karen. You're so nice.
No, thank you, though.
No, I have actually tea, which.
I know, everybody has their beverage, but me.
Who's failing? Who's failing? Someone's failing.
It could just be me. My voice is going.
No, we're getting like weird static feedback happening. It's not you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will rewrite that sentence because I think that it's six to one half dozen the other, as long as we all agree that sex-based harassment falls under. Or sex discrimination. Yay, thank you. Turns out my microphone is also bad. Thank you so much. All right. So, moving on to sex-based harassment, I don't think we asked for any changes there. It's just an extremely long definition, so that's going to go all the way through page After sex-based harassment is sexual assault, followed by the now-stricken definition of sexual harassment. I just wanted to make note of that. I went ahead and went through and made sure that sexual harassment, sexual-based, all of those references to anything sexual in terminology has been taken out, because it's not relevant here anymore.
Kara, the parts that are stricken, and it may be coming up, so I apologize.
That's okay.
The parts that are stricken here on 8, under 17, for sexual assault, do they show up later on? Because they are part of the statute definition for how you do your analysis of sexual harassment. There's those three different types, which is your quid pro quo.
Right, so 17 is sexual assault.
Yep.
And that is defined under, under the definition of sex-based harassment. So all of your language around that is in the pre, what is now the previous pages.
Got it, okay.
And then, sexual harassment as a definition has been removed. And that's how it came, that's how it came to us.
Okay, sexual harassment. Gotcha. Hmm, all right.
Do you want to take a minute with that?
No, keep going, and I'll just, I'm just. That's where sexual assault is, but harassment.
It's that whole.
But we struck.
That's the whole definition.
Quid pro quo, then the hostile environment. My only concern is if those, those elements, when you go through to define whether sexual harassment has occurred, you look at, you look at those factors, which are, you know, severe, pervasive, objectively offensive, and there's three different kinds of sexual harassment. So that all came right out of the statute, so I'm just.
Right, well, and from our first conversation, you had mentioned that sexual harassment is now fully covered in a separate policy under discrimination, and is no longer relevant to the Title IX work as it relates to Policy 415. So that was actually a pretty big part of our initial conversation, was removing sexual harassment from this policy because we're redefining it as sex-based harassment underneath sex discrimination. Does that, do you want to maybe spend some time with that and come back to us about that?
Yeah, yeah, if we can.
Yeah.
Isn't that all defined in our sexual harassment policy?
This is our sexual harassment policy, though. If you think, we have a 414, which is not statutory and not tied to educational benefits or funding, but I'm pretty sure that, and I have to go back and look at it, if what I'm, if what I'm understanding is because, and you say it so artfully that I go, yeah, 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 and then I, I think about it and I go, wait a minute, is that sexual discrimination? Can you say that again, Kara? Say it.
Yeah, so the way that it was explained to me initially, to the committee initially, was that we were removing all language that was sexual harassment, because that term is no longer covered under the current Title IX. That we have, like, the, the process for filing a grievance related to sex discrimination is separate from the grievance procedure for sexual harassment.
That's correct.
So because of that, we have a separate policy that handles sexual harassment, and we have this policy which handles sex discrimination. So for that reason, we needed to remove all references to sexual harassment from this policy.
So we have, we have 161, which deals with all kinds of other non-sexual harassment, okay? And we have 414, which deals with sexual harassment, not under Title IX. But I'm, that's, that's a part that I'm having trouble with, and I'll, I'll have to digest it, is sexual harassment certainly is a large part of Title IX. That's where I'm having.
I don't see it defined under definitions in the NHSBA policy, if that's.
You don't?
I do not.
Okay, let me see here.
I don't see it as a definition in that section.
And we're on objectively offensive, let me look at AC, there, ACAC, so 17. Maybe it's the definition piece I'm having the hardest time with, and not the. Prohibited under. It, it is, it's on, take a look under, on page 20.
Of what?
Of the.
The NHSBA.
Of the ACAC, the New Hampshire School Board Association Policy.
I don't know what 20, it's not under the definition section. Is it further down?
Oh, I see, so you're saying, is it? I'm seeing it on page.
I don't know what the pages are, or is it what section?
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay. You don't have pages in front of you. Objectively offensive. It's, it is, it's, it comes on. Um, objectively offensive. It's, it is, it's, it comes under, um, it is in the definitions section. It's under, do you have Roman numeral two, and then you go down to A, B, C, and D? Can you see that right now?
Under D?
It's after.
D definition.
D definitions go on to, you go all the way, get to retaliation, can you see that?
Sex discrimination.
And then sex harassment.
Or hostile environment.
Sex-based harassment is next.
Stalking, supportive measures, stalking, yeah, I see.
And so, and we do have language around those things. We have hostile environment, we have stalking.
Specific offenses, sexual assault, dating violence, domestic violence, or stalking, and then it lists sexual assault, A, B, dating violence, C, domestic violence, D, stalking.
Right. That's all under sexual harassment, correct?
Not, it's, it's not under a.
It's now, it's now under sex-based harassment in our document.
And this is saying specific offenses and it's listed.
Right, so one, sex-based harassment. So now, we, our language models the NHSBA language.
Right, it does now. You're saying it didn't before?
No, I'm just saying the previous policy covered sexual harassment as defined. Now, the, many of the things that probably were underneath sexual harassment are now redefined under sex-based harassment.
Okay.
So we have sex-based harassment.
Yep.
That starts here and then goes to quid pro quo, specific offenses, and then goes on to list those specific offenses.
Okay, instead of sex harassment, it's now sex-based harassment, it's the based.
Right.
Got it, okay, thank you. Sorry, guys.
No, that's okay. I think it covers everything, but to your point about the severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive, that is no longer covered under this policy, so.
But.
It needs to be under hostile environment.
It is in hostile environment.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah.
Hostile environment three is, lists three A, subjective, you know, and so severe pervasive.
Yep.
And it's just covered there.
Okay.
And if that adequately covers it per the statute, then I'm good with that. If it's not, then we should probably discuss it.
Yeah, well, yeah, will you just, um.
Is that the wording that was in question? Was just to say subjectively and objectively offensive and if so severe pervasive?
Yeah, I think Karen probably teaches to these terms and wants to make sure that everything that she teaches to is covered in this policy. So if you just look at the new language under sex-based harassment, I, I think it's all there. I hope it's all there.
Oh, the same language that was under sexual harassment is now under sex-based. That was the question, okay.
I think that's where I was getting confused. Okay. Okay, okay. I'll just make a note of that and try and digest it.
Yeah.
If I may.
Yeah, if you read through sex, sexual harassment under seventeen and just compare it back to, um, the prior two pages.
Yep.
Make sure we have it covered.
Okay, very good. All right, um, moving on, let's see, eighteen is stalking, that didn't change. Um, nineteen supportive measures, uh, did change, just to, it's very similar to what we had, but just repeats the CFR definition. Uh, but we went ahead and did the extra, we went the extra mile to include the examples in supportive measures. That was something that we said we were happy to keep. Then on to, uh, section E of room two, which is the information for the Title IX coordinator. Um, you'll see that, uh, there's now language in here that is stricken, um, because it's just been rewritten for clarity as a new two, three, four, and five. The following sections are stricken, uh, D, E, F, G, and H and I. Those are stricken just because similar language has been incorporated, but it's different enough that it was not able to be rewritten, so we've now, uh, stricken those sections so that we can add new ones. Um, implementation, nothing changed from the last time. Uh, section G, uh, this is highlighted, just to highlight the question, the title of G is making a report of sex discrimination including sex-based harassment. Uh, it's one of those areas where I felt like it was pertinent to leave it in. And again, nothing really changed in this section. The next page, though, we still have the text, text boxes that we had talked about. Excuse me. Karen, uh, wanted to make sure that we were including contact information for the various organizations that handle these matters. The last conversation we had, we had said, let's pull those out and put those in an, an appendix rather than have them deep in the middle of the policy. I just didn't wanna do that without Karen's permission. So I just wanted to make sure that is what we wanna do, and if so, what are we pulling out?
Okay, and if I can just comment on that, we're being super transparent, which is good, because there is no requirement that a parent or student file a formal Title IX complaint before they go to OCR and file with them. Just OCR will then reach back to us, so I was just trying to be super, super clear. My only concern would be, will they get to the appendix to find that information? But I defer to you all, it's not required. I was just trying to be best practice.
I think it should be in an appendix, for the matter of fact, as most people would go to a reference section immediately before they would go through each page to look. If it felt, they needed to stay in here, then I would leave it here and put it in appendix.
So, well, that's not a bad idea, I'm doing both. Karen, in this particular section, if we were to remove, I see three text boxes, does any of the language in between those text boxes go with those, so?
You say these, you're talking this one and these three?
Right, so the.
What was the question, Karen?
It's okay, so this is all part of, uh, section G. We've got paragraphs one, two, three, then a note, and then a text box with information on the New Hampshire Commission for Human Rights and the Office for Civil Rights.
Correct.
If I were to pull this text box out, because it's contact information that we can put in an appendix instead,
Yep.
does any of the preceding language need to go with it in order to provide proper context, or can that just go? This is why I didn't actually do it until we had a chance to talk about it, because I don't know if the entire section G becomes the appendix or just these
I see what you're saying.
text boxes with information.
Some of it does go with it, like under, uh, the first box where I, the last sentence, district employee grievance procedures do not have to be exhausted before an employee can file a complaint with. And then it shows Office of Civil Rights, so I'd sort of be saying you'd wanna pull that out to explain why we're putting the contact information in there
Mm-hmm.
for that first box. As far as the out, the outside resources for sex discrimination support, no, that's just, um, again, reaching out, giving them other things, so there's no lead into that.
Those things could change, too.
Right.
Really changes.
Right, because we.
Should be in appendix.
Right, and I think that the reason that we were talking about that before is if it's in an appendix, you guys can just update information without it having to come back to committee for updates. Um, so I do, for that reason alone, pulling it out completely as opposed to duplicating it makes more sense, because then we would have to change both.
Yep, that's fine. I, I added that into the first, uh, in the first.
Well, and it's good information. I just, if we're gonna compile it into, let's just say like a one-pager
Yep.
on helpful contacts, then I can take out this first text box that's currently highlighted without any pre, without any language that goes with it.
Yeah, 'cause it's right in the top of the box.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, there is that. And then the second one I can take out as long as that sentence goes with it.
Yep.
And how about that following paragraph?
That's fine. You don't need any lead in it. It's right at the top, outside resources.
Okay. And then the same thing for the third text box. Right, all right, so that is, I will do that. That's my next to-do. All right, then. We already need an update? Where's that?
Suicide prevention, lifeline is now just a nine-eight-eight.
Oh, okay. Did you, didn't you wanna say that out, out loud for everyone here?
Yeah, I mean, I would just look at, the suicide prevention lifeline, I think is just nine-eight-eight is the number now, which also needs to be updated in the suicide prevention policy.
Okay. Suicide prevention.
And anywhere that, that would be.
Nine-eight-eight, okay. We'll update.
Oh, in terms of that, yeah. Stuff changes to him a lot.
Right.
Yeah, that's the challenge, but especially in the suicide prevention policy.
I have a feeling that we'll be reviewing this policy again.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Look, Liz even has helpful postcards. Nine-eight-eight. All right, um, number two is stric, stricken. It's, uh, because it's old language about sexual harassment. And now we have a new section after that, which is sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment. This, uh, goes on to explain, um, the related, the relation to pregnancy, how it relates to confidential employees, et cetera, et cetera. I have no plans to go over this language unless you would really like me to. This is the new language that, um, uh, that we sort of breezed past before, just because it's standardized language. Same thing with number two, three, then on to J. One, two, three, four, five, then K, L, M, N, O, actually, I'm seeing pregnancy and related conditions twice.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, too.
Yep.
Two, yeah, on page nineteen, and then again on twenty-four. Is that what you're seeing?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think that's fine, because these are two separate sections. One is the reporting structure for sex discrimination, and then the next section is the district response, so it makes sense that it would be, it would go section by section. And then on to P, Q, R, S, T. You'll notice there's, here's the training piece that was stricken earlier in the document. It's back in. And then U for records and record-keeping. Then on to room three, which is the final section, which is grievance procedure. You'll see several pages of stricken language, because that is the old procedure. And then starting on page thirty-six is now all new language for the all-new procedure. We've got the intro statement, and then, uh, complaints, timeframes.
I see what you did, Kara. I, I get it now. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
What is going on? But you str, you included all the old language and then struck it.
Struck it out.
That's why I'm like, oh my god, oh my god.
We made an, we, we made an agreement that we were not gonna do a repeal and replace.
Yep.
So because we are showing stricken language, I had to reinsert eight pages of language just to strike it.
Yep.
Is that helpful? Is it efficient? Is it?
Yep.
You know?
It's helpful for me.
Right.
What we decided.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's difficult when it's a thick policy to see so much stricken language, but if nothing else, it provides context, like it says, okay.
And I think that will probably make me understand the earlier issue I had on the sexual
Right, we rewrote it.
harassment by sex-based harassment, so, okay.
It's okay, deep breaths.
Yep.
I promise I didn't take out any of your new language. All there. Um, and so we've got, let's see, we've moved on. I'm on A was form of it making a complaint, person's eligible to make a complaint, complaints concerning district policy or practice, timeframes, uh, district response to complaints of sex discrimination, ba, 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 complaint consolidation, investigation, consideration, and access to evidence. Evidentiary exclusions, thank you for sending that citation, Karen, to everybody, so that language is gonna stay as is. Uh, duty of staff volunteers and third-party representatives to participate, questioning parties and witnesses, determination whether sex discrimination occurred, dismissal of a complaint, disciplinary sanctions, remedies and sanctions, the appeals process, and then relationship of the Title IX grievance procedures to other discrimination procedures. And then all of the legal references have not been, I have not touched those. I'm gonna leave that to Karen.
Yep.
So I would say the only thing I haven't done is listen to the last part of our conversation, so I would say probably from D, timeframes forward, I'd just like to listen to the audio one more time to make sure that we didn't ask for anything else, but I don't think we did on these. And in the meantime, does anybody have any questions or comments about what this draft looks like now?
Can I ask a question on page forty-one or forty-six? The highlighted seven is highlighted because?
Because there's so much messed up formatting in this document that no matter what I did, I could not get it unhighlighted.
Oh, okay, no worries. I just was worried I was missing something and I didn't.
There's like a rogue code in there, and it really, what it comes down to is that because we're striking language that isn't numbered and we're adding language that is numbered, all of these bullet, like all this numbering structure, I had to do manually. But as soon as we clean it up, then we can apply.
That's okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anything on that particular.
I mean, it's a lucky seven. I don't know. The ghost of policy four fifteen said that seven made me.
So I owe you three things. I owe you the definition of confidential employee,
Yep.
definition of preponderance of the evidence,
Yep.
and I need to compare the sex-based harassment vice harassment, just looking at the language, making sure I, I understand it.
Mm-hmm.
And then that, everything else we're gonna pull, on page sixteen, we're pulling that out for a, an appendix.
Yes, which I will do. That's on my to-do list, so what I'm gonna do is, um, I'm gonna, you're gonna provide me the language to add those definitions of confidential employee, preponderance of evidence. I'm gonna add back in recipient, as clunky as it is. I'm going to pull out those text boxes to make a, an appendix.
Okay.
Do we not have an appendix for this policy yet? Can it be appendix A?
We don't have one.
Okay, so I'll add it as appendix A.
Okay.
And then once we, I think we will need to meet again, I'll update all of those highlighted references.
Also, the Crisis Center of Central New Hampshire is no longer the Crisis Center of Central New Hampshire.
Oh, it's Thrive, isn't it? I think it's Thrive.
Thrive Survivor Support Center.
Oh, wow. That just, when did it?
Just happened.
Just happened, good. I was gonna say, 'cause I'm, okay, good. Good to know.
So you correct that, too?
Yep, thank you for being up on that. And I think that's it. And then, and then based on the incoming administration, maybe we'll just go back to the way we had it. This has been a fun exercise.
I think it's been good work, though, and a good discussion.
Yep.
To make sure that we are comfortable, that the board has its concerns included in here, you know, maybe someone will change it back, but I still think it was
Yep.
good that we did this.
Yeah, I mean, it was good for me to go through the definitions and organize.
I know a lot more now.
Yeah, I feel more competent to, to be able to talk about this and address this.
I agree.
If we only get that out of it, that, I think has been well worth our efforts, which have been.
I like this glass-half-full crew.
Which, yeah, well, we, we put a lot of work into this.
I know, this whole team did. Okay, so we're gonna see it one more time. Unless somebody would like to make a motion to move it to the full board with amendments. But I think we'll see it one more time.
We'll see it one more time.
Okay. Moving on, one sixty-one.
Can I ask a procedural question, though?
Yeah.
What happens if, and I know committee assignments won't be decided on until January?
Well, they've done the first, right after the board meeting, that first week.
So.
The, the executive committee will meet to try to formulate those committees.
So do we try and have our meeting before? So do we try and have our meeting before those assignments were made?
No, we transition pretty.
We can't do that. Don't, we can't do that.
Okay.
So what I would suggest is that if I, if, for instance, I don't end up on policy and communications, I would come to the current, the new committee with a proposal.
Okay, great.
So that, so that work is carried over.
And that has happened in the past on several different things. If the committee were to change, I mean, if all of us were to be reassigned, that first committee meeting would probably include old and new. And just to facilitate transition. And I don't see that as being a problem.
Great.
Other than we just get more meetings. But heading into budget, we're not so dangerous to.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I don't.
I did, there was a communication and policy meeting scheduled in January and in February. We kept it even though we're doing budget. We decided that was the one committee that we would keep going.
Great.
The rest of them weren't, except the negotiations also, who are setting aside.
Let's be real, we'd rather be in this committee than any other committee.
Say that again.
We'd rather be in this committee than any other committee.
Well, you have that opportunity to be able to say.
So we want to have one in January.
We see, no, that's not, you know, they could just decide.
That's right, that's right. So I'm, you know, I'm confident about it.
Yeah, no, this work, as far as our work is concerned, it won't get lost in the shop.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
For someone who has not transitioned to another year.
Right.
Yeah.
But you will.
Okay, moving on to one sixty-one.
Yep. So if I can explain what I did for you.
Please.
I went back and, okay, so one sixty-one, let me pull it up. You have, what I gave you was some red. The red changes were in light of discussions that occurred for both one sixty-one and then Appendix A and B. And then one sixty-one point one, I used the same process. I went through and I made red changes, because the first time I did it, I did it in yellow. Those were, and then anything we discussed that you didn't like or you wanted to put, place back in there, like there were some, you know, for example, the protected classes and things like that. I went ahead and added them in, and I can walk through, I did a brief sheet for you on exactly what, why I did what I did. And then what I did is ask Bridget, bless her heart, to go back in and give us a clean read without any of the orange or red.
Right.
But I wasn't sure if you wanted to compare them yourselves, or if you had any questions, or I can just run through them super, super fast if you would like, however you would like to do it.
Yeah. So let's just remind everyone, I'm sure everyone remembers, but it's been a little bit, that this is a repeal and replace. So we don't need to look at the current policy because, yeah, which, so, but just because it's in the stack, everybody turn it over.
Yeah.
We don't need it.
You put it in just so you knew that that was going to be off the chart.
Right. And that the language, the first time we saw the language, it's what is recommended by the NHSBA with Karen's further recommendations for additions and deletions.
Correct.
And so we had kind of had a conversation about how to format that, how to make it look like, you know, like it's brand-new. And so it looks like, Karen, you went ahead and took those comments, and the marked-up version is just modifications from that last draft.
Correct.
And then this version is now just the fully clean.
Or there could have been, there could have been, I've got to be honest, like, for example, when I went back and I looked at it, I thought, ooh, status was spelled wrong, and no, and I didn't catch it. So I went ahead and made it in red this time, and that's one of the things I want to point out to you as we go in there, so you're aware of any change that was made.
So why don't you go ahead and walk us through the marked-up version?
Okay.
And then we'll just kind of know where your heads at.
All right, so on one sixty-one, on page one, if you look at the second paragraph, first sentence, familial status, status was misspelled. So that's been corrected. Okay? I'll keep going.
Yeah, please do.
Okay. And the next paragraph down, I added, it was ACT, was added after Pregnant Worker Fairness Act. And that's, boy, it's easier to go back up, go backwards, second to last sentence right at the end. And then I made it a period instead of a semicolon, because the sentence went on and on and on, so I just ended it there. So, and then the other thing I did is, in the last sentence on paragraph three, and I did it throughout this policy, is anytime I refer to a policy, I put board in front of it. And then this one wasn't capitalized, and since it was a specific policy, I capitalized policy. You following me so far?
Yep.
Okay. Then moving down to, let's see, the Section Two definitions somehow in, I'm not sure what yours is saying right now. The first sentence was deleted as unnecessary and wordy. So now that sentence should just read, as used in this policy, I believe it says, the terms below shall have the meaning ascribed. Okay? Good. All right, under the grievance definition, the, starting on the bottom of page one in the last sentence, which goes over on to page two, D should be Section Four, because we used Roman numerals instead of letters. Under Section Three, which is policy application, in the first paragraph, looks like, after B there occurs off-school property. I deleted of as unnecessary, instead of occurs off-of-school property, occurs off-school property, if y'all think that's grammatically correct.
Consistent with A.
Yep, okay, good. And then in the second to last sentence, in the same paragraph, the name of the board policy, five thirty-nine, I guess policy should be capitalized before five thirty-nine, we can add that. Pupil's safety and violence prevention, it should be hyphen bullying. That's the formal name of our policy. So I made that addition. Under Section Four, the second paragraph, I deleted, let's see, school was deleted before district. So, because we normally just go with district. Okay? In the second paragraph, under Section Four, I, district was deleted before Title IX coordinator, because we only have one, but that, if you want to leave that in there, it is the district. It's clear that it's the district. But some people, some schools may have their own Title IX coordinators, believe it or not, so up to you whether you want that inserted back in or not. But I deleted it before district, because I'm, there's only one in this district.
But you didn't delete it in the previous paragraph?
Um, I just struck through it here as red. I didn't?
No, on the, right in the paragraph, right under.
So what, how would you, would y'all like it in there or not? I'll just be consistent.
Oop, I'm going to check what we did in four fifteen.
Okay.
It's just the Title IX coordinator in four fifteen, so let's go ahead and make it consistent.
Okay, so delete district.
So all instances of that.
Delete district. Got it, okay. Okay, and let's see, okay, we only have one. Okay, got it. All right, in the last sentence, under Section Four, above was replaced with below due to the location of the applicable policies. So I'm reading from my brief sheet here. So in the last sentence, Section Four, do you see that?
Yep.
Okay.
And there's also another reference to Title IX coordinator.
Okay. Got it, okay. Then what I did last, last time when we went through on page three, when we looked at the different people, in the last draft, I had the people who were supporting the different types of discrimination. New Hampshire School Board policy had used just the types of discrimination. And because I, we do that in Appendix B, I went ahead and changed that section to list the applicable policy and the number and not the person. Okay? And so now, then the point of contact by name and contact are included in B as part of the annual contact list. So this now, one through five, just lists, as I said, the type of, or the policy that applies to the type of discrimination. And it did away with number six, New Hampshire, that was one I had included. So I struck that, so now you have one through five. Number three was changed, let's see, number three pupil, oh my god, number three pupil in there was changed to students. We don't use pupil or student for consistency with other policies, if that's okay with everybody. And then number five, I put back in, based on the request last time about the protected classes. So that's back in there, talking about, that would be the Donna Reynolds District Food and Nutrition Services. So that's back in there. Number six was deleted, as I said, but the person is listed in the appendix. Under Section Five, appendix was capitalized and changed to B. And Appendix A is the plan. So let's see. Are you following me? Because I'm trying to go back and forth, but, okay, good. Under Section Six.
Well, can I stop you with, in Section Five?
Yep.
The first sentence, at any time whether or not an individual files a complaint or report under this policy for Policy one sixty-one, pren-one, do you mean one sixty-one point one?
I do. Thank you. Yep. Okay. Okay, so now under Section Six, which is your retaliation prohibited, the last sentence was modified from on its own to alone. Let's see. So the very last, it says, is not sufficient alone to conclude that the person made a materially false statement of bad faith. I, it was on its own, and I just condensed it to alone. That's all right. Section Seven, the correct and formal title for the, it should be five oh four slash ADA coordinator, and ADA had been left out previously, so I added it. In the first paragraph, under Section Six, and I apologize, it looks like I jumped around there. An, AN was deleted before appendix, which was capitalized and changed to B vice A. ADA was added before five oh four in the last sentence for consistency.
So for that?
Yep.
Is it five oh four slash ADA coordinators or ADA slash five oh four coordinators?
It looks like.
I, I think.
Did I go back and forth?
It's just that in that particular section, the bolded part says five oh four slash ADA coordinators. And then as you get into the sentence, it says ADA slash five oh four coordinators. I don't, I don't know if that matters or if it's important, but if it's a title or something.
It is. They should both be included, but I'll, I'll look. I'm not positive. I want to say it's ADA five oh four, but I will figure that out.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, in the second sentence, under Section Seven, the was struck and appendix was capitalized, and then B was added for clarity.
I don't have B, but I put, I put it in.
Okay.
Myself.
B, okay, good. All right. Under Section Eight, no later than October fifteen, twenty twenty, was added, and then I struck it, since it was not shown in draft one, and it's, we're long past the deadline. But that was included, and I didn't want to just, I wanted you to see the language. C, Appendix A was added to the end of the first sentence. Okay. Board was added before Policy five thirty-two in the fourth paragraph, under Section Eight, for consistency. Under Section Nine, I believe it is, three, paragraph three, both at the same time here, is prohibited from discriminating, replaced this institution, for clarity. So, number three. Is it clear to you all what I'm talking about? Because I'm trying to jump back and forth here.
No, I missed, I missed you.
Section Nine, let me see here.
Oh, we're down to nine.
Yeah.
Page five.
Three. Let me see where I put it. Prohibit, is prohibited from discriminating. Okay. In the first sentence, under three, it now says, the district is prohibited from discriminating on the basis of race, color, national origin. It used to say.
Does not discriminate.
Does not discriminate. And I think I did that because that was the go-by from the New Hampshire School Board Association. Let me look really quick. See, one sixty-one. Three. USDA. Yep. One second, oh, wrong one. This is nondiscrimination. That is the right one. That's the plan, number three, USDA. Oh, sorry, it is here. Okay. It is here. Yep. Okay, number three. It does say. In accordance with, yeah, federal civil rights. Okay, the district. It had said, this institution, I changed it to, the district is prohibited from discriminating on the basis of color. Okay?
Sorry, I'm going to pause you real quick.
Yep.
So, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, all the, all the way back on page four, under Rome nine, number one. So I'm just looking at that language, and I was curious, I was trying to see if that was consistent with what is recommended by the NHSBA, because there's a particular, it expands on, on what race means.
Yep. Well, it does, as used in this policy, or as used in the section?
As used in this section.
Yeah, that's in there, under their policy.
So, okay.
It's there, it's the second sentence, under I one. Protective hairstyles. And protective means hairstyles or hair type, including braids, so on and so forth. You see it?
I do.
Okay.
I'm curious, I'm curious, just curious where that comes from.
It's a, it's a case out of Texas, believe it or not, where they, they kicked an African-American student out of school as a dress code violation, because he wore corn, he had locks.
Cornrows, yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm all for protected status, that includes protecting hairstyles and hair texture. I'm just very curious about putting hair texture under, as an immutable trait, as associated with race.
Yep. But it is word for word out of the policy that they gave us to go by.
Yeah. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna do a little homework on that section. Just to make sure that there's a federal, that it points to something that is federally defined. Because I, I don't know if that is. I have, I, I have issues with its accuracy, I guess, is my, but we can come back to that.
Okay. Link tested, which shows up in three, the third paragraph, I just deleted. That, that was on note, when they link tested that, I didn't think it was necessary. Under three C, it's on page six, I added C before email for consistency with A and B. Under four, for, I, I, I did nondiscrimination was changed to hyphenate non-hyphen discrimination in the title with the D capitalized, because it was, I, I copied that from four fifteen to be consistent. I think it's non-hyphen discrimination.
Right. Well, it's, it's, so in this particular policy, it's written both ways.
Yeah.
So we just need to create.
And the title on this policy is a non-hyphen discrimination.
Should they both be capitalized then?
For what?
On four.
Non and discrimination?
Yeah. There's notice of, see what it says?
Right here. See, if you take a look at nondiscrimination, there is capitalized, but not there.
It wasn't there, I think I missed it on the second, see, I did, I missed it on the second one, because I corrected it.
Well, and this is a, this is a style, this is, that's a style issue. So like, for me, I, I would not capitalize a hyphenated, the second word of a hyphenated word. But that's, that's just me.
Okay, is that a choice? That's a choice, isn't it?
It's, I mean, it's a, it's a choice.
Okay.
But I'm also looking for the use of nondiscrimination in the other policy to see if it's hyphenated at all.
It is in the title of, of this policy, interestingly enough. And in anti-discrimination plan, anti-discrimination is violated, is a hyphenated.
How about, we'll just, let's, for the, for the sake of time. Um, how about, we'll just, let's, for the, for the sake of time, uh.
Yep.
We can just do a little homework on that.
Okay.
And then whatever the answer is, let's just make it consistent.
Okay. Um, all right, the next change was, the same change was made in A, let's see, with a period, okay. Yeah, so that'll be consistency there. Under four, B, again, um, consistency, a period added at the end of the bolded sentence for consistency. Cause you can see under four, above, and below, um, and in the sub, some of them have periods after them, I didn't know if you cared, but I wanted to point that out. So, that's another stylistic thing. Four, B, small I, the was added before appendix, and appendix was capitalized and B was added. Okay? Under four, B two, a period was added at the end of the bolded sentence for consistency again. Um, and then, under, except as provided in paragraph one, point four, point C, was changed to C below, and the was changed to a small T.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Under section ten, at the end of the paragraph, the was deleted before district, and district attorney, uh, was changed, we, we refer to ours as district council. Um, small change, but just tailored to ours. In, uh, twelve, I think it is, the was removed before other policies, and a period should be added to the end of that, of the sentence. Under thirteen, notice of was stricken at the beginning of the sentence. Um, then I added specific board policy numbers and names were added to the references, to the reference section, for, you know, legal references. Behind four fifteen, the H in harassment was capitalized as part of the title. That was a change from the old one. And then repeal and replace was added, and the date will be included once it's approved by the full board. And then I added the correspond to NHSBA policy AC, I added that for consistency at the end.
Okay.
Those were the changes on that one.
Great. Um, question about numbering. Uh, we still have a lot of paragraphs in here that don't have any numbering.
Yeah.
But some do.
Yep.
Some have regular numbers, some have Roman numerals. It's, it kinda jumps back and forth. Um, so I guess my question is, do we want to introduce paragraph numbers? And if so, do we wanna just follow the same format that we do?
I think we should just follow the same one we've been doing.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's gonna start with a Rome one, and then it's gonna go to capital letters, then numbers.
Yeah, we should've done.
Okay. Do you want me to take a whack at that?
Yeah, if you don't mind, Kara, that'd be helpful. Bridgette would do it, but I, I know she's gonna wanna know what specifically, if you don't mind.
Yep.
If you have time.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's one sixty-one, okay? Um, with regard to appendix A, um, just find my little sheet for you.
What about one sixty-one point one?
Well, that's another policy, this A and B are the appendices to.
Appendices to this.
Yeah. And they were pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Um, on there, you, same thing, I went in and I highlighted a few things and changed them, and then, and then Bridgette went smooth for us. Um, appendix A should appear above the name of, at the very top of the page. It didn't, just to be clear that it is an appendix. And on here, the logo's there, we'll see, um, so that's good. On page two, um, Roman numeral one, I got rid of members after staff, and it now just says students and staff. Um.
Sorry, I'm sorry, where are we?
On page two, under Roman numeral one, prohib- prohibition.
Oh, I see, yep, thank you.
Then if you go all the way to page three, um, under five. Uh, it was changed to, let's see if I can find this, uh, the, for first sentence should, should read, the district has designated and authorized timeline coordinator, an ADA five oh four coordinator, who are responsible for ensuring compliance with federal state requirements prohibiting discrimination, comma, including sex discrimination, I got rid of the hyphen. Sex, comma, sex-based harassment, comma, and educational disabilities under the Individuals with Disabilities Act, period. Okay, that was a change. Under the conquer, same page, if you go down to conquered school district title nine coordinator. Um, and the reports or complaints by students of discrimination on the basis of educational, I put in, in front of disability.
Mm-hmm.
To make sure that was specific. Um, under director of human services, that one sentence, reports or complaints of discrimination or harassment involving facility accessibility by a disabled, we didn't want, or handicapped, so that was stricken. On the page four, moving on, um, there were some things that were, okay, under Matt Cashman. Um, I inserted reports or complaints of discrimination based upon protected classes relative to any of the district's food and nutrition services. This is consistent with what's in the policy itself programs, and it, I unbolded, it wasn't unbolded in yours, but it will be. It doesn't, food and nutrition services. Um, and then as you go down, under director of food services, you'll see website or online accessibility. I don't know, I think I bolded that. I don't know, that was my hit. I unbolded it, unless you all want it bolded for some reason, I don't see a reason for it.
So that, that doesn't need to be bolded?
Nope. But that was changed, should be clean.
Right.
Uh, I think yours is still bolded on a clean copy, isn't it?
It is bolded.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it would, it won't be though. Okay, on page five, under section six, which is your training and education, if you go down to your second paragraph. Um, the second to last sentence, it starts with frequently asked questions, where to turn for help, slash resources, comma, and other useful information, will also be provided on the webpage. So, also and on the webpage were added. Under C, training and education slash staff, the title nine coordinator will provide annual, I think there should be a comma, in person, it doesn't need to be bolded. Okay, that's a change, um, I'd like to make. And then in the next sentence, where it says, at all district, instead of eight schools, it just says at all district schools. And then, comma, two food service personnel, so I added two. Under D, training and education of students, um, first sentence in that paragraph, it should say, including responses. So, comma, supports, comma, so I added S's and added commas. On page six. The paragraph beginning with the title coordinator, at the very, at the very end of that sentence, it's all on sentence, title nine and board policy was put back in there, and it should be four fifteen, not four fourteen. Under seven, uh, you can see, in the first sent, I guess it's the only sentence, constitutes sex discrimination. Um, I need to eliminate a hyphen in between sex and discrimination.
Mm-hmm.
Comma, and then sex-based, will be, it's added and should be hyphenated, harassment. Or discrimination based on educational disabilities was added. Okay? In the next paragraph, any employee who, I got rid of has, and changed witness to witnesses. Uh, did away with in violation of the privacy of this policy in the first sentence. And then, has a duty to report such conduct, and I just said, report the conduct. Um, and then added in, or the ADA five oh four coordinator, that was added back in, or added in, excuse me. Um, very last sentin- very, very line in that paragraph, I struck incident and, and put behavior. And then instead of will, maybe, because we don't know upfront whether we'll do subject to disciplinary action. And then I unbolded in the next paragraph, policies four, wanna unbold four fourteen and four fifteen. And then policies five seventy-five slash six twenty-five should be unbolded, added educational before disability. In that same, right in that same sentence where it talks about those policies. Retaliation prohibited, um, in that first sentence, or other individual, it was on account of, I changed related to. Okay, and then in the very, the second to last line in the same paragraph, they had retaliation, comma, provided. And I, I got rid of however, provided however, so I, it just says now retaliation, comma, provided that a finding explicitly or implicitly, blah, blah, blah. Okay? And then finally, um, on that page, and actually the last thing I did, under dissemination, is plan updates should be submitted to the board. Um, I deleted and just said, should be submitted to the board for review in time for budget consideration. Those are the changes.
A question, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go for it, please.
Is that, um, what, number nine there, dissemination?
Yep.
Is that needed?
Is that what?
Needed? Cause nowhere in the actual plan, did, did I recall, having a statement about dissemination of the actual plan, so if this is the appendix, do we need to have something that's, that it has a deadline of two years, once every two years?
Well, in the plan itself, when they laid out the guidelines that they wanted us to follow, that's where I took that from. But, I don't think it's a requirement, no. Well, you know what? I, Liz, I'll have to look at that, because they wanted it, they even went on to say, and there it is, it'll be in the off years when you're not looking at the, uh, well, it's not in here, when you're not looking at the suicide plan. So I do believe it needs to be, but I can verify.
Cause I understand, I understand the suicide plan also has that, but this one, I, if it's not in the actual policy, why would it be in the appendix?
Well, cause the plan might have to be updated? And in here, you're saying under the plan portion of the policy?
Well, under the policy itself, one sixty-one.
Yep, no, I got you.
We don't have it written about dissemination.
Yes, it is, it's under sections eight, Roman numeral eight on page four. The last, um, sec, the last one, it says no less than every two years. Off years from review of the suicide prevention plan, the superintendent shall update the plan. What's that?
Notice of, the superintendent will provide.
The.
The nondiscrimination notice and to all applicants employees.
Yep.
But it doesn't s-
In time for budget consideration?
It doesn't say no less than once every two years, right? Am I?
Mom. Yeah, it does.
Sorry, I'm on something else.
Is your, uh, I'm sorry.
Where's, where's?
I'm just trying to make sure I understand, this is an appendix to this.
Yes. So, it's right here.
On page four?
Right here.
Yeah. Page four, just above, just above Roman numeral nine, no less than once every two years, off years from review. So, update the, and present it to the board for review, planned updates must be.
So, where on page four? Right here, no less than, once every two years.
Oh, okay, so do we wanna say that, I guess then it doesn't matter if it's in there? Okay. Or have it in the end here, in terms of, notice of compliance? Or under the plan? Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Also, this final sentence, notice will be provided, is that what you're worried about?
No, I just was like, if it's, why is it, I did not see.
Oh, I see.
So Karen just clarified.
Yeah.
I did not see it in the actual plan, so I was wondering why it wasn't in appendix, if it wasn't in the actual plan, but it was.
Mm-hmm. I also have a question, sorry, I was distracted from your question, because I noticed in Rome seven, report complaint and grievance procedures, paragraph two.
Mm-hmm.
Um, any employee who, uh, witnesses, or who has reliable information that another person may have been subjected to discrimination or harassment, has a duty to report the conduct to their immediate supervisor, la da 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 da, at the earliest opportunity, and in no case longer than the end of the next school day.
Right.
And that just piqued my interest, because we had had a conversation about policy four fifteen, that said, um, any person may report sex discrimination, da 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 da, without delay, and in no case later than twenty-four hours. So we had talked about the difference between twenty-four hours and a school day.
Right. And I think, yeah, we did, and then we talked about, I remember this, um, that sometimes the end of the school day can be the start of a vacation.
Mm-hmm.
And so if we say twenty-four hours, and somebody's on vacation, they're gonna blow it off.
Yeah.
So that's why. I, I agree with you on consistency, so they should be the same, but, um.
Which do you, which does the district prefer?
Hmm. I would, I would say probably the next school day, because of vacations, or snow days, or other kinda logistics, but either one.
Friday afternoon at five o'clock. Has to be Monday, right.
So, and in no case, so, talking now about policy four fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
Can we change, and in no case later than twenty-four hours, to end in no case later than the next school day? Is that?
Right, and that will be consistent.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question on?
Yeah.
On page six, well, just a consistency, and just, I could, you can explain to me is, we say, we'll be in accordance with policies four fifteen, four fourteen and four fifteen. But then, later we go down and say, in accordance with policies five seventy-five slash six twenty-five.
Yep.
Is that the same policy?
Yes.
That just has a double number?
It has two, it shows up in two different sections, whereas four fourteen and four fifteen.
Or two separate?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. I don't have my policy.
So.
Where's your book, Jim?
I know.
So. This all looks good to me, I mean, I'll make note that, again, we don't have formal numbering.
Right.
But this is a, a plan, not a policy, so I think it's okay to be slightly more informal. Um, so I'm fine with it, if, if anybody else wants to comment on that. By all means. But, again, we, you know, we just talked about moving some material from policy four fifteen into an appendix, so that it is more easily amended by the district without having to come to us.
Right.
So I just wanna ask again, do we even really have changes, like formal changes to make to the appendix, or this is more of an FYI?
Well, this is the first time we've actually had a plan, and it does say, um, in the guidance, that the board should approve it.
Okay. Okay, so it is an appendix, but we are approving it as a plan?
Yep.
Okay. And if you were to make amendments to this plan, it would need to come to the board?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, on board, yeah.
So then why is it an appendix?
Right.
Right, cause the suicide prevention plan is not an appendix?
Um, because we have a plan, it's noted in that section of the policy itself, but I figured if we put all of that in the policy, it would just make it so long.
Mm-hmm.
I wasn't sure where to make it, so that's why we went ahead and made it an appendix.
But is the suicide prevention plan, is its own?
Right.
Policy? It's, it's not a, it goes along with it, but I don't think it says appendix, but I'd have to.
I think it's just a plan.
I'm just wondering in terms of consistency, like.
We have a plan, it just says the district will do a plan, but it doesn't necessarily have it in.
I, I don't think it's an appendix, I think it's, it's on its own.
I think it's just part of the policy that says we have to have a plan.
And then it comes as a separate document with the policy. I'm just trying to be consistent.
And reviewed by the board and, and adopted, as it was originally, we've gotta bring it back to you, cause there's been some changes.
Right.
But it's going to the instructional committee.
Okay.
So, if you don't wanna make it an appendix and keep it consistent, we could just take out appendix A, if you don't want it.
But then you have this embedded into the full policy, that's a law.
But the suicide prevention plan is not embedded into the suicide policy.
No, no. That's what I'm saying, I don't, I'm not supporting that. I, I would not want it to be in there.
Right, so we have our policies, inside some of those policies are the creations of plans.
That's right.
You have your own storage, wherever that may be, of those plans. The policies may direct that the board either needs to approve those plans or not.
Right.
Right.
But, you know, when, when we have our sort of binder of policies, the plans are not in there.
Yeah.
Are they?
Prevention plan, I believe, is in the policy book. It's like.
So maybe.
I, I, I'll look it up.
Joint loss, are you talking about joint, there, another one where we have a plan is the joint loss committee.
Mm-hmm.
And we have a plan there too, but I, I can't remember if I made it an appendix or not.
I don't remember. Have to look.
Okay. Um.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I think in terms of, I think what we're trying to get at is, how can we give you guys the flexibility you need to update information that doesn't necessarily need to be set in policy? So how do we divide that up? Do we have our formal policies that always go through the committee? We have our appendices, which we essentially give permission to the district to amend as needed. And then we have our plans, and maybe some plans require board review and some don't. But it is helpful for the board to have all of those plans in one location for review. So maybe that's a, a fully separate section of our sort of policy umbrella. So we have our binder, that is physical and electronic, and we've got our policies, our appendices.
And our plans.
On your two due. On your to-do, the to-do list is the governance plan, technology governance plan, so that has to be done every year. And, and so we're gonna, we're bringing that in. Approved by the board.
All right, well, put it on the list.
Yeah, that's a to-do. That's a to-do, cause we have to do that.
So the suicide prevention and response is policy five three-two, and then it's a separate, it says policy five three-two conquered suicide prevention plan. Doesn't say appendix.
Yep.
It's just a, it's just-
Yeah, that's probably, I remember that.
Part of that policy almost, but a separate document.
Right.
But I can't confirm that, that's the only one I'm familiar with, so I have to go through them.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at joint loss, and then go back and look at our technical guidance plan, but it's easy enough to strike appendix A if you just don't wanna, you just wanna include it behind it.
Yeah. I, I wanted to do, I want everything to be easy and accessible.
Right.
And know that we have those plans in place.
And if we ever get audited, it's a good thing to be able to find it.
Right.
I mean, I-
Well, listed here, they're both for suicide prevention, they're both listed as policy five three-two. So if you went to policy five three-two, you see both because they connect, they're together.
Look, so maybe I list it with on the sheet itself, and it, it does say in the title of, of the policy, um, conquered school district nondiscrimination and equal opportunity employment and anti-discrimination plan. So we don't need to make it, potentially need to make it an appendix, it's already named.
Right, I would, I would agree, and big, just because I think that we wanna make sure that appendices are reserved for essentially like forms, documents, that you just don't need us to review unless it's part of like an overall policy change. So if like every single year you're updating the names of the outside resources,
Yep.
that doesn't need to come to us to change it to thrive from the crisis center.
Right.
And so if that's in an appendix, then you know that that's more of like a form.
Okay, so on, we have an appendix B, which is your annual notice of contact information that goes with, so that would then become potentially, that's the next one in order, and I, I have a really quick sheet on this one. That potentially becomes appendix A, but that's gonna mean, I'm gonna, whoever does it will need to go back and make sure that in the policy itself.
Did we have the right?
We have the right appendix.
I'll do it.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so looking at appendix B to one sixty-one, um, it was changed to B, but I'm gonna change it back to A potentially. Okay, deletion of district in the first line, so it just says, it, that's not a part of the title, so I got rid of that. Um, in the second paragraph, delete prohibit, uh, I, I deliberate, I deleted prohibits and added does not discriminate on the basis of sex and prohibits sex discrimination or sex-based harassment.
Yes.
Cause that's consistent, okay? Change education pro, education program to educational program on, let's see where we are on that one. Put that one in there, education program to educational, hang on one second. I'm not seeing that one. All right, well, never mind on that one for a second. Delete as required, let me look here. As required by Title IX and its regulations, just trying to see where it was deleted from. One, two, three, four. I don't know, I'm gonna have to look at those two, I apologize. If you go down to the, um, fourth paragraph though, one, two, three, four, I added non hyphen discrimination policy, and I did capitalize both non and dis, N and D.
That's okay, that's the way Kathleen wants it, I just know it.
Okay, I found it for four fifteen, comma, located at, and then I put in the website, the website was there. Then in the last sentence, where it says scroll down to policies, should be capitalized, comma, go to section four hundred. So section was added before four hundred slash personnel, okay, that shows them how to do that. Um, in paragraph five, one, two, three, four, five, um, then to, um, okay, uh, in the first sentence, sex-based harassment was added in that first sen, well, sex, I'm sorry, to report information about conduct that may constitute sex hyphen discrimination, that hyphen should go. Is that showing on your copy right now?
Yeah.
Okay, that should go, or make complaint, or make a complaint of sex hyphen based harassment, and I crossed out discrimination. Okay, and then you go down to the next sentence, and it said, it tells you how to do, where to find the forms. It says, you know, go to the website, then under our district, comma, district information, comma, was added, okay? And then at the very, in the very last sentence, the same paragraph, it tells you to go to the complaint form, scroll down to sexual harassment policies, and then to the complaint form, so I crossed out scroll on. Okay?
So I have a couple of questions on this paragraph. The first part of the sentence, to report information about conduct that may constitute sex discrimination or make a complaint of sex-based harassment. My understanding is that since sex-based harassment is a form of sex discrimination, shouldn't there, shouldn't it say to make a complaint of sex discrimination? It sounds like, it sounds like it's two different things.
No, you're right.
Provide information about sex discrimination or make a complaint of sex-based harassment, but-
You're right, you're right.
So I think that needs some clarification.
Cause they're, or sex, so it should be sex discrimination, not sex-based harassment.
Right, I think we can get rid of-
So first we do report, and then we do complaint, so it should just be to report information about conduct that may constitute sex discrimination or make a complaint of, do you wanna repeat it again?
Yeah, I would say to, I would combine the two, I would say to report information about conduct or make a complaint about conduct that may constitute sex discrimination under Title IX. You know, something like that.
Okay.
Because the complaint is for sex discrimination.
Got it.
Generally. And then I'm also wondering about the second part of the paragraph, cause it points you to reporting sexual harassment, which we've now divided up those processes, there's a, a process for sex discrimination and a process for sexual harassment. Is the complaint form the same for, for either one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it, they're, they're both-
So the entry point is the same.
Yes. And so you, and that goes right to the, that's, and you know what, this isn't, it, you don't have to include this, but I thought it was important to, cause unless you're, you know how to find the webpage where all the forms are located, and that's why I gave such explicit directions, if you guys think it's too much.
No, 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 it's good.
But it is the same.
Okay.
Okay.
My questions are if this is just contact information, why do we need all of these extra words in here? If it's already in the policy, we're reiterating statements that are in the policy, that this would just be contact information.
Right, so, yeah, and Liz has the New Hampshire School Board Association recommendation for this appendix up, and it's really just names, numbers.
That's fine.
So, do you take out those descriptors?
Then we don't have to get into all the details of how it's written, or?
This is the annual contact, uh, notice of contact.
Unless we feel that it needs to be reiterated again of what to do, but if I look at this, I'm like, where's the contact information?
Yeah, so keep the first paragraph, and then just keep going down?
Yeah, take out all the-
Just take out all the stuff in between?
Yeah.
Broken down by specialty, you know, who owns.
So, the, the current proposal on the table is to leave the very first paragraph, which gives it context, delete the second paragraph regarding the statement of nondiscrimination. Keep the-
I would, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
I would recommend we leave that in there, I, I think that's important, again, just to cite it. Liz, are you looking at the go-by on the New Hampshire School Board Association on that one? Okay, and they didn't, I thought we had to put in our notice of nondiscrimination again, but I could be wrong. If you don't see it there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really just-
Just the contact, that's fine.
Names and numbers, but it's fine, I mean, I think it's okay to let us know if you think that it's important that we have context.
Yeah, and it's consistent in, you know, what we put out, and we prohibit it. So I would, I would recommend you leave that in, and then you can just go right to that last, that second page, where, you know, you start right out with that ADA five oh four coordinator, and then the others. And then of course I added the adoption date, and then the policy that pertains.
This also has outside agencies listed, which aren't listed here, like Office of Civil Rights, Offices of Assistant Secretary of Civil Rights, Boston Area Office, New Hampshire Commission-
I think because I put him, didn't I put him in the main policy?
Those are in the plan, those are in the plan.
Department of Justice, but it may be worth to put it again here because, I mean, I can see people saying, maybe they've already read the policy and they just wanna quickly jump to the contact information. They're coming back to the policy because now there's an issue, they wanna jump to all of the contact information, or they wanna make a print of just the contact information and put it up on their fridge.
Right, and also, this would be exactly what we would be making for four fifteen, pulling those text boxes out. It's that, the information you just said, so in that form, it would apply to both this policy and, and four fifteen.
Yep, that makes sense.
So it'd be a nice clean copy.
So we'll add it, I'll add the outside agencies.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, give it a, give it a try.
Okay.
To, you know, eliminate as much description as possible, while also preserving the things that you think are helpful, and then maybe we can look at this again.
Okay. Got it.
Awesome, thank you. All right.
The only, oh, the only thing left is one sixty-one point one, but it's a pretty long, are you all up for that, or are people done?
Well, it is seven fifteen. Let me just peruse this real quick. Cause again, this is all, this is all new, but it looks like you've made some updates to what the New Hampshire School Board Association has recommended.
Yep.
Just flipping through. Sorry, I'm gonna go have a cough attack. Why don't you guys decide, I'm gonna be right back.
I mean, I'm happy to move through this quickly, you, cause it was a repeal and replace, was it? And this was a-
Actually, it's a new one, isn't it, one sixty-one point one is-
Is new, we don't have a, yeah, we do not have a-
So I think it should move pretty quickly, considering the, the real repeal and replace one went pretty quickly.
Should I wait for Kara?
Yeah, let's just wait, it's a brief recess.
Yep, no problem.
Did you get one?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I think I had that anyway, didn't I, didn't I put that into your folders?
We have it in there a couple meetings ago.
I thought I did, I thought I put it in.
Yeah, ooh, sorry about that, okay.
So, do we wanna re, I'm sorry, so go through one sixty-one point one and then do the weapons, or do you want to?
I think I'd like to put a pause on one sixty-one point one, um, because we have been kicking the weapons policy down the road long enough, and I think it's time to review it.
So we're putting this away, or we're gonna get to this?
I don't think we're gonna get to it tonight, I don't think my voice is gonna hold out, to be honest.
All right.
So for now, we're gonna put a pin in one sixty-one point one.
Okay.
We are moving to, excuse me, conquered school district policy five forty-four regarding weapons on school property. What you have before you is a proposal brought to you by, uh, member Liz Boucher. And so I'm gonna go ahead and hand it off to her to explain, uh, her changes.
Um, okay, but before I go through that, I just wanna explain why this is coming to the board. This is something that certainly is important in current day. Two days ago, on December sixteenth, yet another school shooting occurred in the US. That marks the eighty-third school shooting in the US in twenty twenty-four, surpassing twenty twenty-three numbers. Twenty nineteen, in twenty nineteen firearms became the leading cause of death among children and teens in the US. Furthermore, I'd like to, to let the public know that it's an estimated four point six million American children, or over forty percent of children live in households with at least one loaded unlocked firearm. Nationwide, on incidents of gun violence on school grounds, perpetrators are almost always current students or recent graduates. The majority of firearms used in school gun violence incidents are obtained from the shooter's home, the home of relatives, or the home of friends. And research shows that secure firearm storage practices are associated with up to an eighty-five percent reduction in the risk of self-inflicted and unintentional firearm injuries among children and teens. Keeping students and teachers and staff safe from the threat of gun violence should be the responsibility of all adult stakeholders in our community, that means not just teachers and staff, it also means parents, family members, um, all community members, um, to reduce the risk of access to those firearms. This is why I bring to the board to consider a revision to policy five forty, five forty-four weapons on school pol, property. Uh, revisions to include education to staff, students, and families regarding secure firearm storage and its importance to reducing access to firearms that have the potential to be used in school shootings as well as suicide. Revisions that I have requested, as you can see, some, hopefully I did this correctly, Karen, I, I did my best at these. Striking the initial, um, guns and firearms to make it clear that it's weapons and firearms. Also being clear, as we have defined in, or had stated in our facilities policy, that weapons are not permitted on conquered school district property. Adding language throughout, which you can hopefully kind of see what was, what was highlighted in here, including the term weapons. In addition, any student who brings a firearm, um, as defined, to school will be expelled or not less than one year. It does, you know, I saw the comment from Kara, I don't think it needs to be one year. In my mind, I thought that one year with the days was specific to school days, but that's not defined. So twelve months is the same. This pursuant to the provisions Gun Free Schools Act, the board requires the superintendent to contact law enforcement authorities and/or Division of Child and Youth Services. There was that question of and or, um, you know, having, that would be a question for Kathleen about what, um, she recommends. And then, most importantly here, is to include safe weapon storage education. So given the high incidence of youth firearm incidents and death, the district is committed to reminding adults or educating adults, providing education of secure firearm and ammunition storage. Safe storage education will be provided to families along with written notice of this policy at least once a year. Questions, comments?
The one, looking at it right from the beginning, um, I think that where you start out under weapons and firearms on school property, I think we need to be clear, um, we need to bring the Gun Free School, Schools Act up before we say that because you've got your federal law and you've got your state law. Clearly, under the federal law, Gun Free School, there's that act, and that would apply. But under state law right now, you are allowed to- But under state law right now, you are allowed to have, in certain instances, weapons on school property, in your car. They're supposed to be covered up, or I forget what the exact language is. So I'm a little, it may be a little overbroad. That's my concern there. And if we get challenged, it's not the state that's gonna pursue this. It would have to be fed, okay? Because the state won't take on a federal on this one. I don't, I don't believe right now, because they're trying to figure it out. So I, I hear what you're saying. I just think we should say, in accordance with or pursuant to the Gun Free School Act, weapons are not permitted. And then, that way, we don't, if somebody challenges us on the state law, we're not quoting to the state, we're quoting to the federal, much like we have this, we have this thing with Title IX, where you have federal and you have state, okay?
Doesn't matter.
Well, I hear you, but I think that's the only way we can get
You can say that all you want, but it has no, has no legs.
I know, but I'm afraid that if we don't try and put that in there, that we're saying something we can't back up, under any circumstances.
I mean, it's what we have in our, that statement is what we have in our facilities.
I remember. We talked about that one.
And we talked about this, yes.
Back then, I betcha. But I, I think there's a way to get to yes here, or at least narrow it a little bit, so that our citation says what this says. But currently, that's not a, that sentence in and of itself, we may not want them there, we don't want to permit them, but under state law, employees can have weapons in their car.
Right. Well, and I think to Karen's point is, all we have to do is add, in accordance with the Gun Free Schools Act and the federal citation, so that we are pointing to our legal reference.
Right.
And that's it. And, and then I think we, I mean, we could go so far as to make note, really, in any policy, that state law supersedes school district policy, period. And that, that's, that is a true statement, that is true for every single one of our policies. But we can still write our policies, because the change, you know, the law changes year to year. We may be out of compliance with the RSA before we have a chance to even update policy per the RSA. So I think it's under, unless, I mean, you can speak to this, Kathleen and Karen, that, you know, ultimately, state law supersedes our policies, so we just have to set them in accordance with.
I will say, we always try and be as consistent as we can with state policy. So that's, that's
I know, it's very, it's a dilemma. It has been for years.
Yep.
So is the word, in accordance to the federal law, Gun Free Schools Own Act?
In accordance, in accordance with the provisions of the Gun Free Schools Act, comma, weapons are not permitted.
And that way, if we get challenged on state law, that we'll look at it and say, that's not what we're saying. We're saying federal law. We're not addressing state, and hope we don't get challenged. And if we do, if somebody shows up with a weapon and we feel it's threatening or harassing, they call the police.
Right.
But it's up to you all to decide. I wanted to point that out, the supremacy clause.
And I think, I mean, Liz, I think you've done a really good job of making clear what our intentions are, while also keeping language in that it's may and not shall. It's, you know, at the discretion of the superintendent. I did think, was there, oh yeah, see, even the expulsion provision has a contingency for the superintendent's, you know. Like, those things are important to me, that we be as nimble as we can.
So Liz, what did you mean by look-alikes?
Can you, can you point to the language?
Oh, I'm sorry, in that, under weapons and firearms on school property
Like fake guns.
Where she's, where she's describing what weapons are.
Like fake guns.
So, a little boy comes to school with his toy, puts it in his backpack, and does, decides to, on the school bus, decides to show it to all his little buddies. You know, he's eight years, nine years, 10 years old. Could be a little girl, too. Didn't mean to.
And then that would be at the discretion of you.
I just want you to be, you know, I want to be careful here, because that does happen.
I mean, I think it is concerning, though. You know, when I saw a young boy bring his combat getup gear to the playground with his fake guns, I mean, that was concerning. Right? The same would be if someone pulled that out of their backpack. But it would be at the discretion. And it would be an incident that would be
You know, I have to, I have to rely on the ability of the principal to assess the situation. There's no question about it. But it's real. It's a real situation. It does happen.
So let's, actually, let's play through that scenario, because right now, we have, in accordance with the Gun Free Schools Act, weapons are not permitted on district property. This policy applies to students, staff, and members of the public. Student violations of this policy will result in both student disciplinary action and notification of law, local law enforcement authorities. So that actually doesn't provide discretion. That statement says, if, if a child brings a weapon
Or a look-alike.
Which includes a look-alike to campus, it will result in both student disciplinary action and notification of local law enforcement. Do we think that the superintendent or administration should have discretion there about those two points?
Yes, we could say or, I mean, certainly it should be notification.
Situations that can occur, the, there is discipline, even with the look-alike. And we always call, we call the SRO or the PD, and we follow through on that. And for more, for, for the purpose of education, educating the youngster about what, you know, what that means, when they take out something out of their backpack, or they carry it to the playground, you know? And it, and it's, can be terrifying to others. So that's our lesson. That's about, what we have to do is help educate them. Just like you wanted that last paragraph about educating around the appropriate storage of weapons. We, we, we want to do that. We want to help educate kids, too.
Ask the question. What happens when a high school student takes out a pocket knife to cut something or?
That's happened, because they often carry it. You know, you think about your, your career technical students, who often are, you know, take a wire, because they're cutting a wire in their home construction program, or they're I've had kids who come in because they just went fishing, and they have
Right, I mean, this is not, it's a running manner, but could be taken out to use.
And so I, again, I think we have to have some discretion on use, on how our principals handle it. In every case, by the way, when that happens, this administrative team is calling us. They're calling me. And they're looking for, they're, you know, not advice, because they know what to do, but they want to make sure that I know and they're headed in the right way. So we need some flexibility, because it does happen.
You've got switchblade knives. I suppose you could put a blade length on knives.
Is this, this is following the RSA, except for the what's in parentheses?
Right.
But even, no offense, but even
The look-alike, the look-alikes is also part of the RSA?
Even fingernail tools, fingernail tools have a blade in it, you know, so, I mean. There has to be discretion.
Well, it's, student violations of this policy may result. Can we just put, may result in both student disciplinary action, notification? I mean, do we put, like, disciplinary action, does that also include notification to the parents?
Well, yeah, I mean, it has to. You might put that in, including parental notification.
Or that could be, that could be the shell, that, like, student violations of this policy will result in parental notification and may result in student disciplinary action and notification to local law enforcement. So at the very base minimum, there's a conversation with parents happening at home. Even if that conversation is, we know that's a knife that is being used in everyday life for fishing or as a, as a tool, but it, it can't come onto school property.
The MOU, we have the Safe School Memorandum of Understanding that we have with Concord Police Department, is what we're referring to, and this would be an instance. And it does say, even if we, like, even with assaults or whatever else, even if we choose not to go forward, we still must notify parents. That's very clear. So, but it is nice to put it in here, too.
Pretty standard operating procedure for administrators?
Yeah, I would say so. And I also want to make sure, I want to acknowledge, though, that when we're talking about the flexibility to, to hand down disciplinary action in, to our students on a case-by-case basis, we need to acknowledge that there needs to be equity, you know what I mean? Like, in terms of how that disciplinary action is doled out, I trust you, because there, there's such a variability of these cases, but we also need to be cognizant that, you know, statistics do show
That's right.
that there are instances of punishments having more severity, depending on economic status, race, ethnicity, immigration, you know, all, all the things, all the stats. We've all seen them. So when we keep it this broad, we just open ourselves up to that a little bit, but
And that, you know, that becomes clear in the data that we have to submit, not only the data that we submit to the department every June, as you know. And then, again, we're now in the process, again, of doing the, the Civil Rights Report, which includes all of this information, weapons, who's carrying, the class, if you will. And so we have to report all of that. So it's really, in many ways, helpful to make sure that you are equitable across
Do you think that a data collection component is pertinent here? Like, should the
Well, we have mandatory. It's mandatory for what we do at the department, as well as Civil Rights Report.
Okay.
We must do it.
And how do we ensure that the principal at school A is interpreting and being fair and consistent with the principal at school B?
Yeah, we talk about that, so that our, our disciplines are in sync with each other. And that's a big topic for our principals. What happens at Abbott Downing, happens at D. Eva Mather, kind of thing, right?
Okay.
And that we're handling it in the same way.
So we do have training or at least
Right. Well, that's part of their principal's meetings, when they, when they meet and talk about it.
There's also in the, I'm looking for it, weapons in the school handbook. We talked about this last time. For weapons, they put out a chart of disciplinary action, and then they notch in, you know, the, how it's applicable. And so this goes out, so it's consistent as far as level four violation, what they can do, you know, what can be done.
And they work on that. They work on that together.
And I can tell you, normally, they're gonna call Kathleen, or I'm gonna talk to them, too, about, hey, you've seen this before and what happened in those cases. So we do, we do try and be really consistent.
I also have to rely on, as difficult as it may be sometimes, but I do have to rely on, and they have to rely on patterns, patterns of behavior.
Right. Yep.
So may I ask one other question, and this, Liz, and this, when you discuss that safe storage education will be provided to families, are you, how is, how is that gonna, how are we doing that?
I mean, I, I would like to see that in handbooks. So every handbook has a definition of what safe weapon storage is. There is material that can be provided in buildings. Oyster River has it, posters in their school.
I didn't know. I didn't know if you were sending letters to each individual family about this.
It was more, like, discretion of
I don't know if you've noticed, in the superintendent's, when I do the updates with, with Terry, we're, we're at the bottom of the, of our, we try to keep it to one page. I don't know if you, because people won't read it if it's too long. But we are, we're putting resources for parents at the end. So that's a great resource, you know, here's a, here's a link to a piece that would share about, you know, safe, safe storage of weapons. So we've been doing things like that. I think it's helpful.
I think it, I think it's very helpful.
Along with, along with the, the handbooks, the student, student parent handbook.
Because I know that there are cases where someone may think they're being safe in the storage, only to find out that that's inadequate action.
Right, right. Or that there's updated technology
Exactly.
for safe storage, so.
Exactly. But I, I just want to make sure that we have a, an idea of how we're going to do that. I don't, I do not question the value of it.
Right. I mean, I look at, you know, I listen to the radio and following the shooting a couple of days ago, and, you know, death of children, the number, the number one cause of death over illness, over, you know, anything else is gun violence. So for me, it is a health issue. You know, we talk about health and wellness with our students all the time. And we want them to have healthy, make healthy, safe choices. This is an, absolutely, in my mind, an extension of those healthy, safe choices. I don't think that it's political in, in any respect. It is what it is. It is what we are dealing with on a regular basis, and to have any opportunity to educate our families on health and safety, you know, it's incumbent upon us to give the best information that we can. And having it set forth in policy, I think, is a great idea, because it, it commits us as a board to that aspect of health and safety now and in the future.
And, and to help them educate their children in this situation.
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, most, any parent that I know would want their children to be safe. And not prohibiting anything, but just the safe handling of anything that was, be in the household.
Right.
Potentially could be.
Right.
Right, the importance of secure storage, I think, is just as important as learning how to use a fire extinguisher or CPR, making sure you know what that, that means. So students can ask their parents, you know, if they know there's a firearm in the house, is it securely stored? Especially, not just for the, the number one killer of children, but also for suicide rates, the highest rates of suicide, of gun violence are from suicide in the state of New Hampshire, so.
I agree.
Yeah. I'm, I'm glad we're looking at this. Thank you for bringing it forward. In terms of language, I just want to put it to Karen and Kathleen, how are we feeling about this proposal? Typically, proposals for policy come to us through the process of review with administrators, teachers, and, you know, your staff.
Well, I haven't brought this yet, too. You know, I did look at, I looked at it when you first sent it, right? But I always bring things like this, where it directly affects them, right, to the principal's meeting. Or it, actually, it's something like this to the admin council, because it includes so many, so.
Do you think a, a good next step would be for us to massage this language a little bit, and then
And then, and then I can, in the meantime, because I, I know the changes that you suggested, in the meantime, I can work with our administrators, because they need to have this.
Yeah, and I would really appreciate their perspective.
Yeah.
You know, if they have ideas that, you know, because they're seeing these things every day, right, so.
They always do.
And they may be able to help even strengthen the policy.
Right, that's what I'm hoping, right, yeah.
This is, you know, this is pretty, covers what we deal with, and what, what could happen.
Okay, great. Are there any other comments, questions at this time? Liz, as the person who brought this proposal forward, are you satisfied with the next steps?
Yes.
Great.
Are we looking at this for some time in one of our next meetings?
Yes, I would say it's, I'm, I'm happy to work maybe with Liz, because the document is in SharePoint. We can update these small language changes. And then, I think the next steps is to then allow Kathleen to take it to admin, get a review of it, and then bring it back.
So if I bring it back to your meeting in January, which is the last, I will have met with all of those folks.
Okay. If, I mean, if that's the turnaround time you're okay with.
Yeah, no, I am, because that, the month of January is when I will see them all.
Okay.
Regular principal's meeting and the admin council.
Okay.
I have a question on the third paragraph, the timing, the 365 days. Kathleen, do you know, is it one school year? Is it an academic year, or is it a calendar year?
Usually, they talk about it as a school year.
I'm wondering if that's what the language we should use then.
But, you know, there's a lot to that.
The original was 12 months.
Yeah. There's a lot to that, because we, we, we can't, we can't just expel kids. We, we have to provide suitable educational, they have the right to pay, public education. So, yeah, it says expulsion, but that doesn't mean that they aren't, the district doesn't have an obligation to, to support that education, so.
If, if there are language changes that would be
Yeah.
helpful for that, will you bring it?
Yeah, I will, I will. We'll work on that piece, because we do have that obligation. We would never
Right, just send them away, yeah.
May I ask a question? Are there any org, clubs, classes, groups, or whomever that are in our schools, and I'm thinking more towards the high school end of this, or that would routinely use something that would be considered a weapon? that would routinely use something that would be considered a weapon that, yet, that we would be pulling?
Not to my knowledge.
There's no target or pellet group, groupings or anything such as that?
I mean, some schools have bow and arrow clubs, you know, where there's a-
Archery, yes, I know. That's what I was asking.
Yeah, I've seen archery, but I've never seen anything, anything else. At least in our schools, in the other schools I've been in.
Just checking to make sure.
No fencing clubs that says swords?
No fencing clubs.
I still don't know what a stiletto is, other than a heel, heeled shoe.
It is a nasty name.
Got it. Okay, great. Thank you very much. It is 7:45. We put a pin in 161.1. Do we want to pick it up, or do we want to call it a night? How's everybody doing?
I'll be, I don't know about you guys.
All right. If Karen's done, then we're done. With that, I do not believe we have any motions tonight, because we're going to revisit 415. We're going to revisit 161. We're going to make Appendix A into a formal plan. We're going to make Appendix B into Appendix A. I'm going to work on the formatting and numbering of all of those documents. And Kathleen is going to take our edits to the weapons policy, to her administrators. So there are no motions needed tonight, other than a motion to adjourn.
Smooth.
Thank you. Moved by Jim Richards, seconded by Liz Boucher, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned at 7:46.
It's been a pleasure to serve on this committee with all of you.
It has been a pleasure.
We did a lot.
Best committee ever.
We did a lot. I used to, I used to say aye.